Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Everyone who's here, we have a forum.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to do the consent? I knew that we approved it. Second? In favor? The last select board meeting, not man, select board meeting. It's Thursday, November 3rd, 5:30 at Town Hall. Madam Suzanne, any announcements, comments?
I had talked with Eva Woods' daughters, Nancy Neuss and Patsy Schaefer, and they tell you that it would be convenient for the family because Nancy's granddaughter will be home this weekend. So if we can present the Boston Post Kane to them at 1 o'clock on Sunday, that would meet their schedule. Will that work for you?
We will present it.
At Eva's.
Yep.
Okay. And by the by, I think as chair, we should do office. Just a little thing.
Do we have a certificate that we'll present to them?
Maybe, or...
We could.
We don't have just the...
But we could.
We should, because then they keep us ready.
Right, because they can.
Yeah. Well, it's not a bad idea. They keep it until, I think it's the next time.
Until they pass away there.
Yeah, right. And then it's returned to the town office. And of course, because two of us won't be there, it would be a public meeting. But Patsy indicates that it might not be the idea for an entire crowd to show up. Certainly would be appropriate for the board to be there.
Since Kathy's presenting, Madam, can I ask you to take pictures so we can get some for the town board and such?
Yes. Get my trusty phone charged.
Any other comments?
The pizza party was fabulous. It was like 100 anniversary. And 50 people and 48 pizzas.
Nice.
Took a long time to cook them all.
I'm sure it did.
You cooked them all?
We had two ovens going simultaneously. At 950 degrees, it takes 90 seconds, give or take, to come. It still takes time. It was fun. People enjoyed it.
Okay, business item number one. Survival landing update and parking discussion.
I got in touch with Sally again at your request. She reminded me that the goal of an ordinance should always be to have something that's enforceable. She said, basically what we've talked about before, that if we have an ordinance that we cannot enforce in its current state, it should be repealed in its entirety. Unless we have a way of enforcing what we have currently on books, this final parking ordinance should be repealed in its entirety. So I think the only option that we have at this point, because it allows the Shellfish Warden to enforce the parking or the Sheriff's Office to enforce the parking. Since the Sheriff's Office provides our warden services and they're currently unwilling or unable to enforce our parking ordinance, that would mean that we wouldn't have anybody to enforce it unless you want to go down the path of hiring a third party.
I don't think that's in the budget at this point.
No, it's not.
What can we do to keep some of it active? Like the time of use? You know, it's...
She said that we're unable to do that unless we have a way of enforcing it. Theoretically, you could repeal the ordinance and still post signs. But the signs would not have the weight that they would have if we had an ordinance. It would be merely a suggestion rather than something that's enforceable.
Here.
Should this be put on hold since we know where the boundaries are, what the town owns, what we can use? Because that's in the process of being done now, right?
Right, but that still has nothing to do with enforcement of the ordinance.
I know. There's no sense of going too far at all until we know what's there.
It has occurred to me that if we repealed the ordinance and we are simultaneously working on the parking and logistical issues, then we can at least promise that we will have some sort of something at some point. But there is not anywhere near to consensus of what that should be at this point.
No. And the other question is, are we going to continue to hand out parking passes?
We should go off.
We can't do that.
So if we're not going to do that, Sally said that we need to repeal that ordinance. So, because it's very easy for you to enact a traffic ordinance when you're ready.
Yeah.
You know, when we're ready, is the town to do that? We just rewrite it based on Sally's suggestions that she's already given us. Or, you know, something like that. And you enact it one of your meetings. It's not something that needs to go before the town.
So I know if and when we have enforceable support from someone, is, what, the Sheriff's Department? What is their hesitation? They don't have the staff? What is it? Have we even proposed this officially to them like we did with the Shellfish Warden?
We did propose it to them. Joel said that the department is not ready at this stage. I mean, they were barely prepared to move forward with warden services. And, you know, working with one town, they were willing to do that. He said that they are not in the position where they can do that right now.
So it's not forever.
Well, I think if we, you know, we should try and see what they think their potential timeline could be as we bring this forward.
Joel does not have a timeline. You can invite him to one of your meetings, but he does not have a timeline for this.
There's so much...
We've talked about it.
There's so much that's involved. The county has to provide that person. We're not paying the person's full salary or benefits. We're paying a supplemental income for a moonlighting job. For the county to hire another person to cover it so that Bodenham can be covered when there's a parking problem at Sabino, that's going to be a whole different kind of budget thing for which we will pay double, both for our share of the Shellfish Warden and the parking ordinance person.
And that's assuming that the sheriff is willing to do it.
And the commissioners are willing to allow...
The county administrator is willing to bring it forward to the commission. And the commission supports it. I mean, there are hurdles that...
Yeah, but I don't think you want to create a law to society in West Bath when there's nothing to enforce. I mean, we can't just say, oh, do what you want. We don't have enforceable people here. I mean, it's not, we didn't, there was, it doesn't seem like we did any follow-through on the removal of the ledge with the DEP. You were finding out really if that was allowable or not.
Well, they said it was de minimis, so it didn't matter to them.
Yeah, the DEP, code enforcement.
They went there and reviewed it.
So there was no consequence for someone obstructing land that wasn't theirs?
Yeah, they were not concerned about it.
So if I chip away at my property and do it in small amounts?
We'll be able to change for the...
Eventually I can change the answer.
I can answer for the DEP. All I can tell you is that the Department of Environmental Protection was at the site reviewing it, and they were not concerned about that particular damage.
Well, I can believe that it's not their largest fish to deal with. That, and I think that's why it went along. But I think with regards to signage and all that, even if it's not an ordinance, I think telling people what the rules are someplace, most people follow the rules. This is my general optimist vision of the general public, that if I see a sign that says, "No parking from this time to that time, do not park on the landing, blah, blah, blah", I won't do that because I follow what the rules are.
We were told by the Marine Resources Warden that it was perfectly legal and acceptable for parking to be done on the apron and the entitled zone. There's no ordinance against that at this point. There's no state law that... To obstruct everyone else's access, is that...
That's my concern.
They weren't obstructed, so it puts...
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
On the landing.
Would you, I'd like you, Kathleen, to try to back a trailer down there when two trucks, the trailers are parked there.
This is probably not the best time to discuss the particulars of what the ordinance needs to be because we're not ready for that.
Okay, so if the town has no ability to make an ordinance, they have no ability to enforce the ordinance, and we believe this is now a free-for-all down there, then when, my only option is to shut off my driveway so people can't turn around. And when things get crazy, who's going to be responsible? The town? Because the town has basically dropped their responsibility to be able to enforce anything on that property? I really don't know from there. That's what I want to know. Is basically just walking away from it.
Well, we're not walking away from it because we don't have, we don't have a police department and we are unable to enforce it ourselves.
Yeah, I understand that. So we need to move forward. Where are we going from here?
And I also want to point out that it was not enforceable when we had the Marine Resources Warden in person who was theoretically responsible for that.
No, theoretically, not...
We can just say, "No parking at all." Sally would, that is an option.
And that would be an option. Well, here's something that I think our concern is this. There is no parking there, realistically. I mean, yeah, they can park on the landing. People park up, you know, on the road because there's like two spaces there for what says to be permitted parking, even if you take away the idea for there to be a permit. The parking is so limited that I don't think that realistically, that's ever, you know, because we bet and lose about expanding that area. Yeah, and where are people going to park? This is always going to be an issue there. It's a landing, but it doesn't have parking. So it's a catch-while-you-do whatever way you look at it. You're either going to have to park on somebody else's property, park down on the tidal water and be blocking other people from the ability to access that easily. I mean, these are the issues. And it's like, you know, there are, to have someplace else maybe that has the ability to have water access maybe is really what the town should be thinking about at this point. It's a public landing and it needs to remain a public landing as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. But where do they park, Madam? I like that, we can't say it's a public landing.
Where do they turn it on, Madam?
We do not have the... That is at this point.
So where do they turn it on?
So close reaches of private road, you know that.
It is private. I know exactly where it's at.
We have had it all, it's...
It's been surveyed. I know exactly where my property is.
That is fine. But we are not here as a community. We do not have a live proposal. We do not know where the road is, where the boundaries are at this point. And we do not have enough information to make any decisions about anything tonight except that we have been advised by our attorney that this is an ordinance that we cannot enforce. So on the basis of our attorney's recommendation and kind of instruction, we need to repeal the ordinance.
Well, I think it does do a disservice to anybody who's paying money for a parking pass, you know, to continue to...
Or maybe your real estate taxes as well.
What about somebody that's actually paying a real estate taxes and has to deal with this?
Well, it's just, what I'm saying is we're issuing a parking pass that we have no way to enforce. It doesn't make any sense. So it's a disservice to anybody who might be purchasing.
And I don't understand where this idea is that we don't know where the boundaries are, et cetera. Because our land's been surveyed. There's so many from your office, what's his name?
Right, and that's what they're basing their current survey on that they're conducting.
Right.
Surveys of the invited parcels. We don't have it documented in town. That's what we're doing. We're getting it documented.
Okay. So, I mean, when all that happens and we see where all these private properties are, I mean, how can you say that you want to continue this to be the primary public landing going forward?
I don't think anybody is saying that it's going to be the primary public landing, but we do have an obligation to keep public access open.
Right, no, I understand.
It is a public access.
That's fine.
And they're allowed to use my property as I so desire.
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
Without everyone losing it.
Right.
But then there's an issue.
But we still have, we're required to maintain public access, access.
That's fine, but I'm saying this. If we put a gate up, which we can do because that is our private property, there will be no way that a truck with a trailer can turn around. We have hours of video footage.
That may be true.
And every time someone needs to turn around, and we have been kind enough to not do that to this point, hoping to get some sort of resolution that would work for all of us. But they have to come down to back it down. There's no other way. Either our driveway or the one, the Seal Cove. But the Seal Cove is pretty steep. This is what...
No, it's too much. The angle doesn't work.
All the time.
We might have to end up doing what Barney suggested and put some kind of docking situation out there so that they're not backing it up.
But you're still not going to be able to turn. I mean, if they close off their driveway with a gate, it won't matter what's out there for docking. It's not, a trailer still has to be able to...
Yeah, it'll go around every day.
I mean, I didn't see anybody offer providing with any financial resources when I had to redo my driveway a couple years ago because it was pretty much destroyed by people pulling into my driveway. Nobody's ever thanked me, nobody's ever said anything.
And we let people park on our property because it was getting all torn up. And just as a side note, we're not trying to be, we have nothing against anyone. We want everyone to be able to use that. And to me, it's upsetting that sometimes people who come there, they look at it and they're like, "I can't get down there today" because there's other trucks and trailers parked down there. And they don't feel confident enough. That's a steep landing. That's the other thing that I want to mention about it is, it's kind of dangerous. I closed my eyes when I see you because it is very steep. And that was even brought up by the guy who had come out who surveyed it and we were looking at possibly expanding it. But of course, there was no parking.
Well, that's why we're doing the survey right now so that we know what we own so that Barney Baker can go ahead and come up with a design to improve the landing for safety purposes. And then we can apply for grants for that. So we are looking at making that safer part of the process.
Well, I think, I understand the point of repealing something that's not enforceable, but I don't think going completely cold turkey without support to the neighborhood, without at least posting hours or something of a suggested participation.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Because I think it's terribly unfortunate for the folks that have to put up with this on a regular basis.
It just wouldn't be enforceable like an ordinance. It would be more of a suggestion.
But at least it shows, I'll say, good faith back to the community that's been tolerating this. I don't think we're supporting them in this nature. And I certainly would like to expedite a solution and that's what we can.
There is absolutely no reason in the world why you can't put up your own signs to say, "I have property".
We do. We have, we have thought of...
We have private property. But I would like to, one thing we would like to do on the close reach sign, I noticed it on the Sunset Nelson Gulley, it says, "Private road". Maybe people think this is a public road. I mean, it goes to nowhere. It only goes to two houses beyond us. But, you know, that's one thing. But I'm not sure how, you know, it's not enforceable either. And it just gets crazy down there sometimes. You've got, you know, five or six cars trying to maneuver around. They're parking on our property. It is not, it is not an easy situation. And we knew the landing was there. And it's not that. We knew the airboats were there.
So it's not that.
So, and it's not that either. Has nothing to do with any of that. But it has to do with the fact that there are more people coming there than there used to be. I mean, we've been around now for about seven or eight years. We've only owned it for five years, but we rented it prior to that. And previously, not many people down there. Now, a lot more. People have discovered that as a place to put in whatever, or fish from, and whatever. I mean, we've had people up on the top part that is where we park fishing off the point. And then I had one on the same side. It isn't. I thought this was the town land. You know, go, no, the town land was there. This is actually property. I didn't watch you following up. Many of us who have waterfrontage have similar issues. Perhaps not as frequently. But we also have had people come down and think that it's a picnic area or a tourist attraction or that they can go down and buy retail oysters off the dock. They can't. I understand that issue absolutely. But at this point, we have an insatiable problem. I can attend the meeting next, is it next week? Or, no, next week is the Marine Resources. Maybe I can talk with the guys again, and I will.
We...
But not all of the people who are offenders, I'm sure, are Shellfish Warden's.
We mentioned a couple times.
They're not, and I'm not saying anything against them. But I am going to add this one thing in about the clambers. I don't know if it's because of, and I did send a letter, that in one of the first meetings, you know, it was brought up about the new owners of next to the landing, which everyone knows as us. And since that time, things have deteriorated with the clambers. And I'm not really fascinated with it. Now they're getting, they're coming out right in front of the cottage at odd hours when they come in.
Drive us, turning the boats, putting the lights on.
Turning the boats, flashing the lights in, revving right in front of there. And other neighbors have seen this as well. Now, this is kind of like some little game now that we're playing. I don't need that kind of stuff in my life.
Nobody does. We talked about having a meeting.
Yes, and I...
And I think we need to bring that forward and bring everyone that is using the facility and try and find a common ground because it's not going to benefit anyone by going like this. And I think we just need to hero inside and try and find if there's a way to a commonality and a resolution in the meantime. And we talked about it. I think we need to make a commitment to have that meeting, to invite all the parties and really try and support the community as a whole and see what comes out of that.
Where would you like to have the meeting?
I don't know. You know, you, when can you come up? I mean, let's talk about it. I don't, I...
It might be good to just to have our new warden at that meeting also.
I mean, let's talk about it. We can talk. You know, it's not up to me. It's up to everyone who needs to participate.
The board, you can, can be found a warden?
Yes.
The Sheriff's Office.
The Sheriff's Office is doing it. How much time do we need to pull it together properly? How much notice? I mean, that's really, I'll leave, don't ask me about the date. You know what it takes to pull it all together and get all the parties involved? Why don't you reach out and find out what that's meant to you?
Well, I'm just saying it starts with the board. If the three of you have a certain time where you would prefer to have it at one of your regular meetings on a different night.
Clearly needs to be a time in which the tide is in. But I mean, you have to back into it. I don't know what time that would be and what's appropriate, how much time does it take to pull it together, to create notice? Only have the ample time.
Are there any trips coming up? Anybody going to be away?
In December.
I don't know. I think it depends on when Saginaw has availability too.
Right. They have to start asking people, you know, when can you do this?
It just starts with the board because it's your meeting. Your calling.
But I can't answer that until we have feedback.
This is why I'm asking you.
Well, I think if we had it at a regular meeting, they're not going to be able to do it. They're going to be at the dock.
Well, I would recommend having it at a regular Marine Resources meeting if the Sheriff's Department could make it. I mean, next week is short notice, but then the end of November is long notice, so...
If you look outside, now it's getting back. So most nights won't be a problem. It's 6:30 for me.
The clocks go back an hour though. It'll be the same. Two weeks after the election. No, it's late this year.
Darker earlier, yeah.
But the Marine Resources Committee meets at 7 o'clock next Wednesday.
And that would be...
But I don't know if that's too short notice to get everyone to...
We know that we can't be back here. And I mean, my general feeling is at this point, because we're coming into the holiday season and all that, it's gone on a long time. But maybe we need to think about new year, new, let's have a clean slate and get this stuff out in the open and get everybody involved. We don't want to be the bad guys. That's what I'm saying. We're not bad people.
Yeah, I'm good.
We're good people. And it's upsetting to us to feel like somehow some of the controversy's been pointed at us just because we have a voice and we got a man of the property there that's been sitting unused for a long time. That's not our fault. We knew they were clambers. We have nothing against them. I have something, I have a little problem that they're starting to act out towards us because they think we're starting some little fire here in the backwoods, and we're not. That person will be dealt with.
There's social pressure.
Not the way they've been acting. Be in the cottage at 4:00 in the morning. There's no reason they're doing what they're doing. Do you know which boat it is? There's two of them. Yeah, do you know which boat's doing it? They take turns. And I get up one morning and I was kind of pissed. I mean, it's going to, we want this to escalate to a point where it's out of control because that's where it will go. Because I didn't, you know, I'm not going to be pushed into a corner on my own property. It's not going to happen. So we either got to come to a compromise. They can clam, they need to clam in the dark, and they don't need to do the harassment. If you walk away alone, they were the first, when they first came here, they were fine. They were fine. I don't know what changed. You know, this other clamber, Gary's got that red boat. He goes off in the off direction. He's fine. Goes off, does his thing, but he's, you know, they're just, whatever, for whatever reason. She got the sheriff.
And I really, it probably doesn't feel like it's going to help, but I think with the sheriffs, there's, there's two different ones coming on board. Then getting to know some of these guys, get to know who's doing what. He's, one of us really a great guy and he interacts well with individuals and he will have no problem having one-to-one discussions with them. So I think this is a good thing for all of us. I think he's really going to help us. And harassment can be dealt with. That's, that's illegal.
Probably have to go through the courts and all of a sudden.
But again, I do think.
But that's part of enforcement. But that's, and that's where I think if we have the meeting and we all sit in the same room and, and, you know, you bring up the topic of harassment, I, I think, you know, the, those that aren't doing it, they don't want to potentially lose opportunities or access. The peer pressure to behave and involve that in the right way and proper, you know, you know, waterfront involvement. No one's trying to shut that down. We're just trying to make it so that it's a collaborative approach for those that are living there and those that want to work there. And that's what we have to try and get to.
We're not the only people living there. We're the only people who came to the meeting tonight because I'm the kind of person who will get involved. I mean, you know, and I will do whatever I need to do to try to make that a better situation for everybody who uses that area.
And I'm a little disappointed too in the community. It wants access. My driver can be able to turn around and I'm okay with that. But when there's an issue or I have any questions or I need some answers, there's no one else here to support me, yet they want me to be generous to them. So I'm a little annoyed at that. That's not right.
So I guess, I, I would like to see us put signs down there to start with that talk about the hours. And, and see if, you know, I, whether it's enforceable or not, it's, it's a step in the right direction, I, I believe.
Can we get a sign from the town, some, one of the town signs that just says private road of some sort?
We could easily order a private road sign. That's not an issue.
And I, I don't think that would hurt.
But we need to trim back the tree. I think the tree is covering the sign.
Yeah, I know. The whole thing with the sign, the close reach sign and the current landing rules, which are kind of nebulous, both of those signs are kind of, we want, I mean, they need to be reset.
They need to be reset and properly positioned.
Because it's kind of a. Did, did Sally give an indication of whether or not, given our peculiar ordinances about meetings and zoning, et cetera, can we just rescind that or do we need to call a special time meeting?
Oh, now it's your authority.
Okay.
Traffic.
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 Okay. Well.
What about other signs? Let's take this one thing at a time. Do you want to put up other signs that say?
It doesn't, it won't hurt to put up signs. And they're not terribly expensive, I recall. Steve, they have one. It is sign stash.
I think, I think we have. Talking about specific signs like Suzanne suggests.
I think it says parking or, you know, we, we know what the hours are. You know, do we say?
What are the hours? Yeah, what are the hours? They're, they're only known enforceable.
Well, enforceable, you're not supposed to be clamming.
It is a state law.
There's, but there's, but there's, I mean, there's a time you can, can't.
It is applicable.
So we need to.
But yeah, wormers aren't allowed for that. I don't know if anybody worms down there, but.
But they can access.
There is one wormer. There is a wormer.
They can go whenever they want.
There, and there's more than one person in the area who is licensed to be a wormer. And as soon as the worms come back, they'll be there. So.
So what's the verbiage per state law?
I mean, I think we should, we should cite the, the proper state ordinance on hours.
But you know, here's, so here's an interesting little point. Let's just bring up, if you look over at, what's the little put in over there? The little park.
Sorry park.
Sorry park, yes.
So they do say that they, it's closed from here to here.
They have an enforceable ordinance.
But that's state.
It's a big animal.
It's public.
The town, the town of Brunswick has.
Does it sunrise or sunset, something like that?
Yeah.
I think that actually requires.
I think it's 30 minutes before sunrise or 30 minutes after sunset or whatever that language is.
Right. Also a walking gate.
And police department.
But I think, I think it leads to these.
It's a traditional that time.
But it, it, yes, and it's, the time is 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes after sunset. And that's, that doesn't, it's not, that's.
I mean, and they say things like overnight parking, which our sign right now says, but that doesn't happen either. Who's right because that's an ordinance. They do enforce it. If you are going out at four in the morning, we, we have people down there at two or three in the, I know they can't enforce it. But just so you know, there are people down there sometimes at two or three in the morning, trucks idling for hours on end, music playing, this and that. And then at some point, boats go out. But it's, you know, that's kind of like overnight parking, right? If you're down there at that time and you're dallying around waiting for the tide to get to the point where you can put the boat in.
But that, that should, that will hopefully come out and be corrected in a community meeting. They say, you know, here's, you know, please, you know, it's the, the idling and a, there's, there's no need to sit there at two o'clock in the morning playing your radio.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it's just not.
Right. No, I mean, this is, it's not just us. I mean, you can, you can have any of the people in the neighborhood there and they all will tell you this is what goes down.
Well, a couple of candidates, I had no idea why it is us. He'll drive all the way from wherever he lives, wherever he lives over the, the road. Jeff is over there. Drives in, backs the truck down, idles for like a half an hour and doesn't put in and drives away. It means the tide's right, the weather's fine.
Change of heart.
I had no idea. It's just, to me, it's bizarre.
Well, we are not in a position to comment on other people's habits, I think, as a board. But I will certainly have a conversation with the shellfish harvesters and convey your issues and our concerns. And that rude behavior is not going to help anybody. I don't, I don't know what else we can do at, at this time.
This is a need to be brought to an escalation that we can't return from. And that, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Right, yeah, we're definitely trying to avoid that. I mean, this is what our concern is.
It's in everybody's interest not to escalate any more than it already is.
Maybe, maybe just that one of the sheriff's deputies responding to one of the wardens at that meeting next week to reinforce their concerns.
What time is the meeting?
Seven o'clock.
Here?
Next Wednesday.
Is it fire hall or here?
Here. Can you get in touch with Joe and see if you can have somebody come to the meeting? Because that might be very helpful.
Yep.
I can do that.
Six.
So one of the guys gave me his name and number and said to share it with the select board for any issues that they have. So he's willing to take calls on this. Other deputies?
I haven't met anybody yet. Have they stopped by the town hall?
No, I was to ask you. He stopped, he was supposed to stop at the store. He would know, he was at the open house.
Oh.
For the fire department? Yep.
Oh, okay.
About the store because that's the.
Bill center of the town.
At the open house, he could kind of introduce himself and.
Yeah, goodness. Yeah.
His name's Honeyton, his last name. You may remember him. It's Al. He's a great guy and he has a way of getting people to do things, but.
Well, I think.
They don't even want to do it and all they do is.
Right, having a sheriff, a law, a true law enforcement official is absolutely going to help in this progress.
He did show me all those tools, his measure of claims and stuff.
Oh, yes, he's all excited in his, in his profession for, for years, so.
One thing, maybe there's more, I mean, I know it's one of the concerns that the clambers are facing was people clamming, yeah, they shouldn't be. So there, we're going to be, we're enforcing this for a lot of reasons. To protect our clambers, to protect our community, to protect. So there's more than just everything that we're talking about here. It's to really support everybody.
And we talk about this, we're hoping some of the things we come up with for Sabino, we can also come up with for our other areas where things are starting to heat up and things are, I can't think of what, like, oh, Bull Rock is becoming a garbage area.
Parking lot.
Yep. They just know everybody's taking their boats they don't want to use no more, the trailers and dumping this. And we're hoping as we work hard through this process and we struggle with that, when we get done, it will benefit all of our landings. Could we please get a vote on issuance of parking passes?
Is it better just to rescind the entire?
That would be better if everybody's willing to do that.
Well, in for penny, in for pound, I move that we rescind the current parking ordinance. Can I second that? Um, David?
I'll say all of those.
All of it. Do we want to, um, do we know what we want down there? Could it immediately, like the private road sign? We want something with quotes of state law for hours of.
I wrote that in my notes.
Okay.
So I'll do some research to see what would be appropriate.
I mean, the two, the two signs that are down there do need to be reset because they're definitely leaning. And then private.
And probably ASAP, just in case we get some weather like they're getting out west.
Yeah, this is like off the topic, but you may not even read. But you know, they put the gully or the.
Culver.
Culvers, yes. The culver, but they dug across the road, so are they repaying that city?
My assumption is getting paved when that road gets paved, I believe.
And Crooker will need to get that in before it gets too cold out, so it should be.
It says, yeah, it's really getting funky again. When they first did it, it was not too bad, but just the traffic back and forth is.
Sometimes they let, they don't pave where the wind is setting down.
Yeah, because it's a dip now, yeah.
But they usually keep the hot topic until about Thanksgiving when it gets too cold.
Okay.
But it's, is my understanding that they're working, there's a project on Mount Road and then it'll all be tarred at the same time. Do you feel better?
Um, yeah, I mean, you know, we.
I don't feel worse. Well, the thing is, it, it sees us quite a bit, so it's sort of quite.
A lot of people pulled their boats and all that, so there's a lot less traffic in general.
It's not open anymore, so.
But the whole thing with rescinding the parking permit thing, so if you're really worried about the people who are using it for shellfish purposes, then maybe you should really only have it, the permits for those folks to park up there and not let it be for the casual, whatever. Because I can see in the summertime, you can't, you can't restrict public. You can sell permits, but you can't. Well, I, I can see now that that'll be interesting because there'll be, if there's no permit system at all, there'll be people parked there when they need to use it.
But how many parking permits do we give out?
I don't know how many you guys.
We don't.
We have, there's, there's no place to park, so you can't provide a permit in theory because there's.
Well, I know, but there are two spots up there that they claim, you know. So we give out 20 permits. Who's parking spots on? And that's what we. And just as a, as a.
Those usable throughout the town or is it just for that area?
No, yeah, it's Sabino. And just so you know, I mean, I walk two or three times a day just for fun because I like to walk. And many times, people who are parked there don't have permits anyway, so. I know. But I do know that the clambers do have a permit because when they're parked up there, they didn't have their permits on.
Well, we're trying.
So I understand. Instead, I mean, it's, you know, something that isn't going to change overnight. But I think if you don't take steps towards improvement, then nothing ever changes. And it is true that more people are moving into the area. I mean, we both lived a couple of different times in places and have gone from being small little places into much busier places and more population, so.
So I don't want you to leave this meeting with a couple of, because we tend to do that. Are you saying that you would like to have the meeting with the clam diggers and law enforcement after the first of the year or do you want to do it soon?
Well, all I'm saying is that for me personally, that with our business back in New York, the end of the year, we get very busy. We will not be back again. I think we're here the 14th or 15th of November for a week. But that's right about Thanksgiving and then we won't be back again until.
Till October 1st.
Well, yeah, like the 23rd of December, nobody's having a meeting in that.
So do you want us to postpone the meeting or do you want us to have it without?
Well, Joe's probably, I think you should be there.
Right. Well, I mean, I would like to be there.
I was thinking doing that timeframe here in November.
I think that's.
And I, yeah, I think that's pretty close. And I think that's why I mentioned.
Crazy, you know, with the holidays.
Yeah, I mean, I've been on other boards other times and I know when this pilot here comes in, everybody just is kind of like, let's just push that off to the first of the year because.
Are you back in January?
We'll be back in January. I can't tell you exactly yet. We haven't gotten to the 2023 calendar.
It's the first.
I understand. Well, we'll be here the week after New Year's and then.
If we aim for the end, end of the month, just to.
Then we know we won't be here. Then it would have to be after like February, you know, end of February probably.
So do we want to try and shoot for the first week of after New Year? And schedule the.
Right.
No, they're, they're going to be up here, the first week they're here.
Yeah, no, just the first week. Yeah. I mean, I can let me look at your calendar and let me send you that along. I mean, if you feel you want to do it before and we're not here.
No.
We need you here. We need you.
Well, it's, it's.
Not just you, some other people too.
Sabino's really important.
We need to get enough time to properly promote it to all the sheriffs.
I think that there needs to be a little bit and get everybody on board with the idea that they want to be.
Well, and it might be. I mean, you said yourself that slowing down this summer, it might be better to hold off until the spring, you know, March time period when people are, I mean, I know a lot of the summer people won't be up here, but when the harvesters are out.
Yearning back over here.
Right, because a lot of them won't even be going to meetings once they get their conservation hours. It'll be slim pickings at the meeting. So maybe springtime, when we're going into the trouble season again, that might be a better time to reinforce this.
I mean, I'm okay with that. And I mean, I'm assuming that some conversations will take place between people who know each other who are here tonight and who aren't here tonight. And hopefully, you know, there will be a little more, you know, back and forth about what's going on and, you know, all that. And so that everyone's on the same page, that we want to try to do something constructive to improve the situation.
And the signs, what are you looking for for a timeframe for the signs?
Um, I will not be back in the office until Tuesday, so I will start on that on Tuesday.
That sounds like a good turnaround. It's usually.
Yeah, that doesn't take very long. And as far as getting the state landing, that might take a few days, but I'm sure we can come up with something.
Do you think we can do it by Thanksgiving?
I would think so.
Because things will get crazy in the, yeah, so if we can get them up before the holiday.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Have a good rest of the meeting, will depart.
There's not much left. We're not getting paid to be here.
Meeting, uh, final number two, meeting schedule. Um, just a request that we have in policy that we don't schedule meetings on holidays.
Yes.
I feel like I'm missing something far.
And elections.
And elections, thank you.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, there should not be a meeting during an election.
Can you draw the, the, you stated policy for that for the next meeting?
Yes. And I'll just add it to the committee policy. I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah. Yes. The.
Well, it's a day in a holiday, it used to be.
Depends on.
It's how it used to be.
I think, oh, it used to be.
Yep.
And you have it in schools.
They have it in legislation every year, but. The court is so against it because then everyone's off and no one's, it becomes a holiday and really.
Doesn't make by one.
People don't turn it out, so that's.
Right, right.
But that's what the holidays for, to vote. Voting holiday.
And the number of ways in which you can submit your ballot. It's, it's very flexible and made, thank goodness. Okay, town administration's report.
Okay, I have specifications for the window project and I would like permission to put that out to bid. And I'm thinking just put a notice in the paper and then send direct requests to people locally who do that kind of work. Do you have any other suggestions?
Sounds like what we were talking about. So this has all been approved from the Department of Money, correct?
Correct.
As well as I saw on the warrant, we had the fire breathing apparatus, that's also been approved.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want a motion?
Um, yeah, that's fine, sure.
I move that we authorize Christine to go ahead and prepare an RFP using the specifications that she has gleaned from experts and that she presented that to us so that we get the job done. When you do the RFP, do you put stipulations in there about timeframe? Because my concern is that someone might be able to do it for you in three months and somebody might be nine months out. If that's something that, if we could get that information, would be helpful to.
Well, and, and our windows available also.
Yeah, things are a little different than they used to be. They would jump right on and I'm not sure it was so lucky anymore.
I'm sure, if she talks to, we'll be able to tell.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to make, to get the bids and there's no timeframes and they sort of have all that information, makes it easier to make it.
Yeah, to the point.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it. All of David?
And Walden, the right lead of the board about the prospective solar project. Mark Ballard indicated that that would be a meeting that would be open to the public. I thought I'd propose one of your November dates, if that works for you.
Yep, personally I'm fine with either one.
Okay.
Seventeenth.
Good, more people just like, yeah, that's fine.
I've been shocked at how quickly that October is going by.
Yes.
And that'd be at the fire station?
Um, I think that's probably a good idea.
So is it not, it's not, is it on, because we have the third right now, it's that town hall, so do you change that?
No, she said the seventeenth probably.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we'll shoot for the seventeenth and see if they're available.
Okay.
Otherwise, we can move it to the first, first in December.
Yeah. That's all I have tonight. Anything from the public?
Yes.
No future gen I's? Do we have? Um, I have talked with Christine earlier. I'd like to see the authorization for the tablets that were budgeted for.
Her preference is not to have one.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Any happen with the redoing the town's records? I think the, there's no sites, have they already been paid for that? Is anything there?
I've reached out to Cofile, who is the one that gave us the bid on that. They have recently gone through, um, their area rep retired, so they're a little slow to respond right now. But I imagine a lot of people are on the same cycle as us, so.
So that's still.
The ball's in the court, but yeah, it's going forward. And, um, yeah, the price on it is fairly reasonable, so with this first year of funding, we'll get a significant, all of our vital records, will be able to be restored and preserved and digitized as well as books one and two for our town books.
Do you?
So that's a, that's a good job to start.
Those are our most damaged.
Yeah.
Did you, any idea about getting a timeframe from them, is it possible?
I haven't even heard that from them, I'm moving forward. Is this a company that we would use down the road to digitize all of the town records? Yeah, they've been in business a very long time.
When's our last correspondence with them, Carol?
We can have two weeks ago. I've been collecting taxes and giving them a chance to respond, but I will rattle the cage again.
All right, because it just, just came us out, it was moving.
I'd love to see it perform. Yeah, it's a good project. Anything else? Do we need to go to executive session?
Yes. We do.
Executive session pursuant to one MRS, chapter thirteen, four oh five, six eight, to discuss a personal matter.
Second. That was, that was a motion.
Yep. All of David?
We will let David entirely?
I thought it'd hang around just.
Well, it's a lot of you.
That won't take long.